Clerk Paul, can we call the committee hold its order, please?
Lennon.
Boywood.
Here.
Leja.
Here.
Fate.
Here.
Pobon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Herr Michael.
Here.
Seven present, Mayor.
Motion to excuse Alvin and Lennon.
Second.
Motion by Fate, second by Ruiz, to excuse Alvin and Lennon. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, for the committee of the whole, we have a presentation by our finance department, Ben and Dana, with regards to our 2022 budget.
Good evening. So today we are going to present the 22 budget draft. So we started the budget process in September. Oh, well.
Dana?
Yes.
Can I just ask you to speak up because the mic is being on YouTube, so we have to, they have to be able to hear you on that too.
Okay, so sorry. Okay, so the presentations, areas we're going to cover is budget process, highlights in the upcoming timeline. So first we would cover the budget process. So the budget process, we started in September, and we was able to meet with all of the departmental heads, and that entail going line by line through their budget. With that being said, and then making, you know, any changes that we needed to do. With that being said, we was able to have committee meetings in October, which livestreamed was four departments that was able to, you know, livestream. And we was also able to get a draft to the Budget and Finance Committee by, in October. So by November, we was able, so with the draft, we was able to talk to everybody if we needed to make any changes or anything. We was actually able to get it to...
Dana.
Yes.
Relax.
I know.
This is your first presentation, so just relax. Just relax.
So, you know, so the thing is, we was able to talk to all the department heads. We went line by line through their budget. We was able to make changes. We was able to get it to the Budget and Finance Committee in time to be able to do the tax levy before December.
Before December.
Correct.
Just to add what Dana is explaining, that we went ahead and submitted all the information needed to make a criminal preliminary draft to allow counsel to make a proper Jackson termination.
Right, no, so, all right, so then we made a determination of the tax levy in December. So in February, we are able to, as all the changes are being updated and everything, to be able to present the final draft.
Did we get, did we get an accounting of all the, the fourth quarter? Is everything in from the fourth quarter?
First primary.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dana.
No, 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 right.
There could be some residual revenues in December that still have to post.
Okay.
But most of your expenditures are having to post.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, go on Dana, I'm sorry.
Right, no, 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 that is totally true. And then, and then, well, then we'll talk about the heroin, the passage of the last.
Okay.
But the thing is that we was able to get the budget process started early enough to be able to do the tax levy before, you know, to do the determination of the tax levy before the said date.
Next slide, Ben. You working the machine for her?
Thank you, Dana. So with, with the draft that we're presenting to you, again, as Dana had presented, we went through every single line item with our department heads and of course presented it to our committee, our Budget and Finance Committee. And now we're, we have produced a citywide budget draft for consideration, for passage. The highlights that I want to emphasize from this budget draft is the general fund outlook, and then of course, there's other major fund developments, primarily in the public safety, as well as the American Rescue Plan, or ARP. So first, let's take a look at what's developed with the general fund. Thank you, Dana. Looking at the, the projection, I think back in November, we had a handle that perhaps the fund, the general fund would break even in 2021. It's turned out that it's trending better than expected. You know, as we had mentioned previously and talked about in the committee, we've had some revenue line items, specifically the state taxes, that have really done favorably, extremely favorable, to overcome some of the revenue shortfalls that we could have experienced in 2021. And in addition, it's leading, it's leading the city to experience a general fund surplus of $200,000 in, in 2021. Again, we will not have the numbers finalized until sometime in May after the audit is complete, so, but that's, that's where we're trending. And as, as I mentioned, we still have some revenues that need to be posted in December. As we look at, you know, at 2020 into 2025, we also went into those years with our department heads, as well as talked further about that to the Budget and Finance Committee. The way things are trending, even, you know, we're presenting a very conservative outlook of a growth in revenues and expenditures of about 2%. With that being said, we are still able to keep track of the expenditure increase, you know, anticipated, whether it's contractual, whether it's inflationary expectation on our expenditures. But at this point, we are still forecasting a balanced budget through 2025. And even more importantly, if you look at our fund balance, our fund balance stands at a very healthy, strong level. Of course, our, we have a 16% policy requirement. Our fund balance has maintained a 20% fund balance, which, as we have, has been proven, it really bodes well upon the city to have that fund balance in the event of unforeseen emergencies, as we've experienced over the last couple of years. So that's, that's our outlook on the general fund. Now I just want to explain further, further, a couple of funds that are impacted in recent developments. First, our public safety pension funding. The mayor had, had brought forward the news last month that we have closed on the pension bond debt as a result. That was, that was last month, and we were able to fully fund the, both the police and fire pension funds at a 3.9% interest rate. Of course, obviously, that's a way better scenario than leaving that pension, leaving those funds, leaving that unfunded and experiencing the 6.5%. So it's a tremendous win for, for the city overall, for its residents, and it's something that we really feel, feel well about going forward in that regard. You know, those two funds in that, in the citywide draft budget, the accounting for that has been captured, the projections have been captured in our 2022 budget as a result. So that's the Public Safety Pension Funding Fund, and then the next one is going to be the ARP, the American Rescue Plan. Our city administrator, Ruth Siaba-Green, had presented back in October, the city's plan, you know, regarding this American Rescue Plan. This was enacted in March of 2021, where the city has been allocated $32 million. Of that amount, the city has received last year $16 million. The remaining amount is scheduled to be received in May. Because these are certain revenue streams, we have to put that in the budget. And of course, that, that plan is directed right now to the following areas, IT infrastructure, public safety, and public works. Very important, the city is continuously monitoring any new developments or any new guidance by the U.S. Treasury pertaining to eligible expenditures, so we're keeping a close handle on that as well. With that being said, we will then go on to the next slide, and that's going to be, after carefully reviewing our budget draft, I just want to alert everybody to the upcoming timeline. March 8th is going to be the date, two weeks from now, where we will hold a public hearing at 6:30 PM. And then afterward, on the, on the city council meeting at 8:00 PM, that's where counsel is required to vote on the ordinance to approve this 2022 draft. From a deadline standpoint, we have to submit the certified, the certified copy of the budget to the Cook County Clerk by March 31st. I know it's a lot to digest as far as the draft itself. I definitely encourage, I'll open the floor to questions, but whatever we are, both Dana and I are available. If there's any questions, please feel free to reach out to us and, and submit your questions via email or call us on the phone. Any questions?
Do you have your notice for the public hearing prepared to give to the clerk's office for publication?
Correct, yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay. Any specific questions regarding either the presentation or something that you might be concerned about in the budget?
So Ben, just a question about ARP money. Is that ever going to be seen in the general fund, or is it always going to be a separate accounting, separate fund for that?
We, we have to account for that separately. We had to, we had to establish a, a new fund as a result of that. And that's something, yeah, that last year we didn't present in our budget.
So then next year, we'll see that as a separate budget that we'll review?
You actually have it in your packet, that fund as well, so yes, you will see the revenues and expenditures for that.
Anybody else?
Hello, yes, Ben, I just wanted to add kind of some of the things that you, you highlighted, that one of the reasons that we did see some of our revenue go up is that we've had historic revenue in terms of the municipal tax, and kind of what we're talking about during our, our borough and municipal securitization corporation, of how much the city was taking in, in terms of sales tax, that from last year to this year, there was a 21% increase in sales revenue. So I'm really happy that, you know, we're kind of projecting not as high, that, that the projections are going to be a little bit lower of how, in terms of how much sales revenue we're receiving. And that is one of the reasons that we have the surplus, and definitely one of the reasons that we ask everybody to shop local, to, you know, encourage your residents to shop local, because the more that we keep our revenue, keep our city, you know, our residents spending money locally, the more of our, our money stay here in Berwyn. So definitely, that's, I look forward to, you know, continuing that, that promotion of buying local and shopping local, because at the end of the day, who benefits is the same residents of getting their money spent here by the city.
And the finance department has been underneath the directive of being conservative with all our revenue streams to begin with, so that we don't overestimate anything. So you guys did a great job again this year, so thank you.
Appreciate that, Mayor, and again, I want to thank everybody involved, Dana, for all of her helping, hard work, as well as our staff, Ariana Macedo and Judy, our county manager, getting all the transactions posted. Our department heads, they put a lot of time and energy in helping us put out this projection. And obviously, the mayor and Ruth, our city administrator, for all their help and support, we're very grateful for it.
No other specific questions? As you're taking the draft home, you guys take a look at it, please direct all your questions, either Dana or Ben in the finance department, send them an email or by phone call, so that they can answer those directly for you, instead of going through a chain. It's better if you direct directly to them, okay?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
I have just one item I want to take a straw poll vote on. On the agenda tonight, you'll see that June 28th meeting had to be moved and/or eliminated simply because that is a primary voting day. That wasn't the original date when the schedule was set up by the clerk's office. So the question tonight is, do you want to move it to either, March, do we say Monday or Wednesday?
Wednesday, Mayor.
Wednesday?
Following.
Okay, either Wednesday or eliminate the June 28th meeting completely. Straw poll vote, or somebody has an idea of what they want to do?
I motion to strike it.
To strike the meeting completely?
Yeah, generally, I've been here, you know, nine years. June isn't that busy, so I think we could make a movement not to have a meeting that time.
All right, a straw poll vote to eliminate the June, the June 28th meeting. Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pobon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Or Aronella?
Aye.
Herr Michael?
Aye.
Okay. So when that comes up this evening, if somebody would make that motion then, and we can get it official.
I'll do the motion, Mayor.
Okay, I have nothing else unless somebody has a question regarding something on the agenda. If not, we'll see you back at 8 o'clock.
Motion to adjourn, committee of the whole.
Right, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Leja, by Ruiz, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. See you at 8.
So the bonds for me is like a, it's just like the regular market, you know, to investors. It would happen, I don't know what's happening. So we had a big time, uh, one of the big guys that helped us, uh, to, to, uh, open, uh, being out. Basically, where did you do all that? You can't do that.
Oh, no, not here. Those are all at home.
Know that, and, uh, and then the meeting is, it works on the operating. And then, oh, the corporation, I'm like, what is this stuff? But it was, you know, interesting. And then that's how the issue will pop. Because only in corporations, well, you got a problem. So, so maybe there's. But that's why I was trying to, they can't use this number four. That's not gonna happen. I know, uh, we can, yeah. Oh, I think you made it to the same idea. Oh, that's, we have a, that's, yeah. I guess it was talking to you. Yeah, you get, she just doesn't, she, Robert, I mean, this is, this is. I don't even play. Everything, I mean, you, I think, like, you would have, you're right, you can. So, but, yeah. I would actually, you gotta, you have to, something, you know. So, it's, yeah. Let me tell you, yeah. Nah, they don't tell me that. No, I know it. Yeah, you know, you know. Um, no, he said, same thing. Oh, they, I knew it, I knew it. She told me that. I think some of that. And then, like, they, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I did, I did that for him. Oh, okay. I know from my own, I'm, I'm, I'm. They actually tell me, especially your personal.
I know, like, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna please up the, uh.
So, very differently FYI.
Is it?
Yeah, but I can't hear almost that.
Oh, my God.
I, that's how you, I'm, I'm.
You're gonna have that black eye.
Yeah, so, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Yeah, that's why I. Are you disagreeing or disagree? I can't. He don't eat nothing.
Right. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in the period now where I'm like superhuman.
I think I died in January of twenty one.
Oh, yeah.
In my time in March.
Yeah.
I was supposed to be there Monday.
Right.
School or tomorrow.
Oh, garage.
How are you?
How are you? Yeah. Oh, that was pretty, uh, yesterday, like most recent study said, and you got the booster, you're probably good for thirty one. Right. Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, so COVID, COVID booster is the most. There you go. You're Superman. Play to the game.
So Mr. Olmstead, I guess?
That's who got me. I guess they.
I'm that, that. Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, spent for work between Christmas and New Year's, we started testing all the staff with a test that everyone was coming to go in there. We tested all the staff on this one before people had tested on that. Do you think? Funny thing is, I, 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 if I have your own, I, I think it'll, it'll, it's deer rock. So I, I was never going to my head. I was never, I, 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 I get back to that one. I stayed home for four days for five days, then later on in the house, it would be out between a half months. But this night, five days, four days, it was healthy. And they said later on in the house. Yeah, so I was three shy and cold. All the time.
Sure.
Oh, really? You got it. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I found. And it was in my house, it was, uh, more out of the body. Yeah, my wife, she was going on a, because she had a pretty small, but what was crazy is my daughter, who I think started jobs, the two of them worked together, and they're like home, like every night, a week together. So that was, who one gets a deal and then one could go. I mean, so it's tough. And then my daughter, she had it, she had it like way back in the day. And then she got vaccinated, booster, and then she got it again. So that's why it's like really crazy, you have to pull through and you have to operate and, you know, you get it, you got booster. That would say, oh, you get it again. People in the living, they say, well, get it, come on, and then once you get pulled, it really, really, it's like a, it's really, like, and then, then it's hard, and then you get rid of it.
No. Uh, I don't think so. No, I'm the only one doing it right now. Everybody else is for fun, just be, uh, be in person. I don't know where to go.
And you don't?
Yeah.
I know, I'm glad in my work, I, I was in my, I was in office every day, I did, well, because of my, my job, I did it. There's no way I could. See, even what else on the script, I couldn't say tightly, I, I, I'm my own script. And if I was at home trying to get stuff, I'm gonna be like, God, just let me take care of this first, okay? The next thing I know, an hour's gone, I'm like, I'm here, and then, yeah. I'm like, do some laundry.
Yeah. My, my shift, I would basically, yeah, sit there and, and watch my picture of the day, and then when the kids want to, and like try to knock it all out.
Yeah, so, yeah, so like, so like you're working, so it's down, and then, and then, at the end of the day, it was work.
But I'm supposed to relax.
And that's when you were just here all to get going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I'm all, my gift, my young gift, they can't, for it all, that's why I'll kill. And she already knew how I was, you know, remote learning. But for her, it was no big deal. I, they, you know, that would be great. But I, in my older tour, I can't, so, so they're each, they, after work.
Right.
Well, yeah, she walks around that school, and she's, um, well, seriously, she, everybody votes her.
Yeah.
Uh, what's your last turn? Four. That's, that's, yeah.
Less fun.
What's, uh, yeah, what's to go wrong? We're all members of town, man.
No, I'm just, I'm just, yeah.
Hey, Rick. Of course, um, we might be live. We might be live on Facebook, this will pick, pick up your comments. But I was happy to help. I hope he, I hope.
I hope it's happening.
Okay.
But I'm gonna tell him, this is the last thing, you know, I'm wanting to, I don't know.
Well, hey, if it helps you, just ask him to call me and I'll be able to talk to him and work, work something out again. But I think Mr. Topinka will be happy. Oh, Pirok. Two minutes. Nice order.
Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Lennon, Waywood.
Here.
Liza.
Here.
Faith.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Seven present mayor.
Motion to excuse Alderman Lennon.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Ruiz, to excuse Alderman Lennon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of Thomas McGrath, who recently passed, he's the uncle of our detective John McGrath, and of James Catalano, uh, who is the brother of our Berwyn library employee Verna Austin, as well as all the men whom we have on the street tonight. Thank you. I see we have a very large crowd tonight, and I know that some of you want to speak in open forum. Be aware that open forum by ordinance is limited to fifteen minutes, and while I'll give some latitude, if you're speaking about the same things, hopefully you have one designated speaker, so that we can, uh, hear what, what needs to be said. So anybody for open forum, please step forward, state your name and address at the speaker there.
There are apparently different rules when you don't like what you're gonna hear, and that's really unfortunate. So with that, my name is Benjamin Henning. I'm a resident on the nineteen hundred block, Wisconsin Avenue. I am here this evening to urge city council to support and for you, Mayor Lovero, to adopt the racial reconciliation proclamation by coming together with a shared understanding of where Berwyn was, the incredible progress that has been made, and where we are going to truly become a welcoming city. In just twenty days of outreach in limited form, the proposed proclamation has garnered one hundred and ninety-one cosigners in full support. There are one hundred and seventy-four Berwyn residents with representation from our school boards, our park districts, our elected city officials, our community leaders, and neighbors who just know that this is the right thing to do and can felt compelled to speak out with their signatures and their comments. The ward breakdown is as follows. First ward, twenty-five responses, thirteen percent. Second ward, thirteen, almost seven percent. Third ward, rich forty-two percent of your constituents, forty-two of your constituents signed on to this proclamation, which represents twenty-two percent. Twenty-three in the fourth ward, eighteen signers in the fifth, twelve in the sixth, nineteen in the seventh, ten percent in the seventh ward, and eleven and a half percent in the eighth ward. Outside of Berwyn, seventeen cosigners signed on to this proclamation, which represents just under nine percent. And I wasn't gonna include the outside of Berwyn response, because I know how this city council looks at outsiders in Berwyn. You've done it for decades. You did it last campaign election with the League of Women Voters, with WBEZ. You said they were outsiders trying to interfere, interfere in the election of Berwyn. And I think back, that's what a sundowntown was. In nineteen seventy, there were zero black residents in Berwyn. We were clearly outsiders, and we were not allowed to be in, in Berwyn without harm or potential death caused to us. So it's pretty disgusting to me that we're having the same conversation today about outsiders that we've had for decades. And that has to change, and it has to change with accepting and acknowledging our history, where we came from and where we want to go, with a shared understanding. Adopting the proclamation will show in words and action the amazing ability for Berwyn to grow through adversity and live up to its ideals. An objective lens, not a lens looking at Ben Henning, the agitator, standing here at the microphone. Look at it as all black residents of Berwyn in history. I just learned that one of our black residents, and I'm afraid to even say his name for retaliation, has lived here for seventeen years, and he is most likely the longest-tenured black resident in Berwyn history, seventeen years. So with that, I emphatically urge you to embrace the racial reconciliation proclamation. I was gonna read it, so it was on record. It will go on record to Clerk Paul in writing. You all have it. All but two of you decided to not respond to me, even with a response, all but two. So you have it in writing. I don't want to take any more time, because Mayor Lovero has decided that the masses that are here tonight do not deserve to have more than fifteen minutes to speak on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tranning.
Good evening. I'm Summer. I'm a teacher, been teacher for over twenty years. I would like to say that I've taught in Berwyn, but I haven't had the opportunity. I'll get to that in a minute. What I want, um, to speak to tonight is, um, Black History Month and Black History, and how that flows through our community. And I can tell you that I've been here since 2010, and I have children, so I've been through the district. I'm not, I'm not satisfied. And I've constantly waited, every year, every February, it's kind of like my, for some reason, I have this marker in my head. Maybe by this next February, these things will be seen, and I will feel different. But since 2010, it's that February's, that's coming is gone, and I haven't felt any different. So it became shockingly clear to me that I needed to do something a little different this year, instead of waiting for someone else to do it. And so this year, I want to be the one to state all of the rec, the recognition that should have been taking place before I got up here to this podium tonight. I want to recognize our contributions to this community. In general, elected officials and school administration usually demonstrates their community success through things like medium home values and income of the residents and median standardized test scores, et cetera. But for some reason, I don't feel acknowledged in any part of that. The lack of providing this narrative include, that includes us, really actually just creates a narrative that we don't even exist. The lack of providing this narrative creates the overwhelming sense that we don't contribute, when in fact, many times over, we are the super contributors. During Black History Month, this month, 2022, um, I want to recognize the accurate history of discrimination that has happened here. And we need to understand that we need to challenge that right now. We could have challenged it last year, we could have challenged it the year before that, we could have challenged it in the other year prior. But this year, it, it has to get recognized, and it has to get challenged. It's gonna make a lot of people uncomfortable, and for some people, they have this myth of thinking that it's actually gonna divide us. You're too late, we're already divided. We need to work on the actual unity of all the people that make up Berwyn. Now, while many people have often never heard of sundowntowns, many people, many black people do, we know. I know. I'm a Maywood native. I'm forty-five years old. I couldn't step foot in Berwyn in my own lifetime. So this is why the Campbell family story is so significant. The history hasn't been told, hasn't been published in books, but it has been hidden through exclusionary policies and secret handshakes. Only the people affected would really know of this thing. There have been so many Campbell families in this town of Berwyn that we're not told about. In many demonstrative ways, we have not felt welcome. And let it be said that there are many white and Latinx residents that have witnessed it and felt powerless as well. Racial tensions have existed in every one of my twelve years of living here, and they continue to exist in this community right now. It has been common knowledge across Chicago that Berwyn was a sundowntown, and was not safe for African-Americans or Latinx. Identifying, rectifying, and understanding these legacies of past human rights abuses promotes the mental health for all. It is our collective responsibility to educate each other, and acknowledge that race-based social hierarchy and all the tools of repression that support it. Berwyn's missteps demonstrate the difficulty that this country has always had in reckoning the ugly parts of history with its professed ideals. This is what we mean when we say that we matter. It is a testament to those with a different lens and a wake-up call to promote equity. It is a proclamation that we shouldn't be forced to face anxiety and mental trauma alone, and that all parties involved seek to repair and reset the relationship. To those that think this is division, it is too late, it has already been divisive, and it reflects badly on you, and that you don't do anything about it. You have once again admitted race to ease your mind, or worse, to achieve some level of gain at the cost of someone else. National statistics reported that US Nigerians are the most highly educated immigrants in this country, and the world, at sixty-one percent compared to thirty-one percent of the country's overall foreign-born population. African-American women are reported to be the most educated American citizens in this country, higher than white women, Asian women, and white men. So, I stand here as a living example of one of those national statistics. Berwyn is demographically surrounded by a largely concentrated population of African-Americans. Have you ever wondered why our population only makes up six percent? And that a handful of black teachers across two elementary school districts and two high schools? I have many stories of racism and anti-blackness, and the power of ignorance, and the perpetuation of racial stereotypes that have happened here in Berwyn. But I will tell you this one story, and I will instead force you to think of the lens that you see with, and understand that this isn't the only perspective that people have the privilege to live by. When my growing family realized that we outgrew our condo in the city, we got into market to buy a house, and we visited homes with our real estate agent in neighboring towns that included Forest Park, Oak Park, Berwyn. Every time we saw a home in Berwyn, our anxiety shot up, because we were both old enough to remember and have experiences of being run out of this town because of our race. We remember not being welcomed, we remember being called names, we remember being told by our elders not to drive around Berwyn or Cicero, many of us avoid Berwyn altogether, but we took the risk. Our white real estate agent from Oak Park didn't seem to understand our concern, but he acknowledged it, and once we decided on a home in Berwyn, he sometimes even sat around with us, squatting on the land, that eventually became ours. My husband Tyler and I would literally sit on the porch and wait for people to interact with us, and we nervously watched our soon-to-be neighbors' reactions to a black family moving in next to them. We walked up the block and around the house for sale to check the racial temperature of the space, we cautiously moved in, and we stayed pretty quiet. It took a few months before any incident happened while my son was in kindergarten class, when a kid told him that he couldn't come over to his house for a playdate because he didn't look like him, but we brushed it off, and we made great friends nonetheless. We lived through it all, despite being ignored, unwanted, unappreciated, we find joy regardless, but today we actually demand respect. We need to admit it, to apologize for it, and to proclaim to do better. Now, I want to say that I've interacted with almost everyone on the board, on some level, being a resident, we've attended the same events, we've been in the same space. Robert, Fett, you sponsored the team my son was on at the Berwyn Rec years ago, and I wrote you a message thanking you for that. Jim, I've been around UND years ago at Emerson, PTA events. Mary Beth, you transitioned from being a Morton West liaison to the Alderman. Scott, who's not here, he dropped by the Juneteenth Fest last year, and we've been in similar circles over years, many years, maybe we'll get closer in time. Our relationship, Alicia, we forged our relationship in front yard meetups. And I want to also say that Leja, Ruiz, Aronella, all financially contributed to the sponsorship of the Juneteenth Fest last year. Marge, I met you at a pancake breakfast, I'll never forget it, at Emerson, you met my mom, and you were also my third ward alderman at the time, and we talked about how unsafe that street was during the three o'clock hour when the kids get out of school. You know, we've all been on countless events together, we've been on strong friendly terms, Cobone and Carmichael actually put in sweat equity at the Juneteenth Fest, and supported vendors, and continue to. So what's my point? My point is, is that I've always been here, I've been present, I've been active, I've been open to forge relationships and to help build community, I've been on the PTA, I've been on anything, I've volunteered, I've been a chaperone, I've been here in countless ways, and I've tried to be everyone's neighbor. But I still, and I've made many great friends in that, but it still didn't grant my son an even playing field, even though he was having, he placed above average in all of his math scores every year consistently, barely anyone acknowledged his gift, as a matter of fact, some people even questioned it. I myself, I've applied to the school districts in Berwyn before I even moved in Berwyn, so it's been over ten years that I've actually applied to the school district for a job, and I've had a master's degree since I've been applying. And I never got an interview until 2016, when someone that's actually in here caused a little ruckus on the school board committee after I wrote a letter. So what am I saying? Credibility, I've earned it. Many people have earned it, the Campbell family has earned it, acknowledge that, proclaim it, so that we can do better, and we can truly be what that Marcus is out there in the parking lot, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
Good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Dranth, I'm a Berwyn resident of eight years, I live in the fourth ward, six thousand five hundred block. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I know that supporting the racial reconciliation proclamation at this meeting is not an option, however, I am hopeful that this issue finds itself on next month's agenda. I know that some of you have had concerns about the proposed proclamation acknowledging Berwyn's racist past, because it might appear that you are taking responsibility for the wrongs of the past that you are not personally responsible for. I would argue that you have a beautiful opportunity here. Even if your position is forward-facing, and you're not the type to drudge up the past, that doesn't mean that the past is to be ignored. If black folks in this community need this step to heal, ask yourself why you would question it, what right have you to deny their healing? If someone gets in a car crash, and I'm a doctor that treats a patient two years from now, that patient still suffering from old wounds from the crash, does that mean I take responsibility for the injury caused to that patient? Absolutely not. It is just my moral, and in fact, my professional obligation as a doctor, to do what I can to make sure that that patient is healthy going forward. Similarly, those of us in public service, when we're confronted with ugly realities in our community, find that we have an opportunity to course-correct future public policy. Even though we ourselves may have had nothing to do with past indiscretions, we are in a position presently to take action in the service of positive social change. Regardless of our control over past events, in spite of those events, and in this case because of those past events, you have an obligation to set anti-racist policy going forward in Berwyn. By supporting this proclamation as leaders of our city, you acknowledge what happened, apologize for any racism, and offer to help heal the wounds inflicted on our black community. Rectify the wrongs of the past and take responsibility, yes, for your contribution to the healing of this community moving forward. That takes leadership, but it shouldn't have to take courage, as it is the right thing to do. I would hate to see Berwyn's racist past follow a continuum into being Berwyn's racist present. We know that this is not a catch-all solution for all the problems we have with race or any other discrimination here in the city. We know that anti-racism and anti-racist actions are complex, layered, and the work is ongoing. As such, it would behoove all of you to show support for the black community here, now, in Berwyn's present and for its future. This is one step in a long process, one layer of a larger issue. Why would you choose to stand against this step towards healing? And if you do, you are condemning yourselves to be counted among those who would willfully repeat the wrongs of the past, and for that, I can assure you, council members, you will be held responsible by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lovero, Clerk Paul, and members of the city council. My name is Michael Solway, and I'm a resident of the first ward. I am here in solidarity with Ben Henning and Summer Butler, in urging the city council to adopt their proclamation and officially acknowledging that in Berwyn, black lives do matter. When we moved here fifteen years ago, it was with the hope of moving into an inclusive and progressive community. Sadly, this has not been the case. Can we call ourselves inclusive when the majority of people controlling our city government, police and fire departments, Department of Finance, corporate council, building department, and appointed committees are mostly white? Here, in a town where seventy percent of our residents are non-white. Nineteen ninety-two was not that long ago, and to move our city forward, we must acknowledge our uncomfortable past, and but simply acknowledging it is not enough. The mayor and the city council must apply pressure to the police and firefighters unions to recruit and hire black police officers. In addition, we must work to add more people of color to all city departments. We can do better. Let's work together to make Berwyn an example of equity and fairness for all the neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy Chavez, sixteenth in Brideland. I'm here with Resoma Collective, I'm part of Resoma Collective, my colleague Gerardo Nava, former Berwyn resident, here with me, and is going to read the statement with me. I do want to echo what Ben said, Mayor, it's your prerogative to extend or shut down open forum, that's totally within your power. You know, I've been coming to city council meetings for years, and there's always only like a handful of people here, and tonight, all these folks here, that's civic participation, that shows how much people care about this issue, that they are willing to show up in support of it. And so for you to start off tonight's open forum by mentioning the time limit, shows just completely how out of touch you are with the concerns of the community, and the fact that Scott Lennon, who apparently is your next-handpicked appointee as mayor, didn't even bother to show up, that says a lot. So, on the eve, or I'm sorry, Resoma Collective unequivocally stands in solidarity with Summer Butler, Benjamin Henning, and all our black neighbors organizing for the city of Berwyn's recognition of black residents' history, contributions, and humanity. We join organizers' call and urge the city of Berwyn to pass the racial reconciliation proclamation 2022. The proclamation calls on the city of Berwyn to apologize for past historical racist practices in order to ensure a better equitable future. This history is not ancient, Berwyn was a sundowntown, and sundowntowns existed well into the nineteen seventies. Some Berwyn residents who condone such racism, and the black folks who suffered it are still alive today. History has taught us that when we don't own the past, we are condemned to repeat it. We witnessed this firsthand when on June first, 2020, during the civil unrest about the police murder of George Floyd took over our nation, Berwyn once again became a sundowntown. We knew Mayor Lovero and the Berwyn Police Department allowed armed vigilantes to break the city's curfew and take over CERMAC to racially profile anyone black. On that day, the sundowntown rule of no blacks after dark became simply no blacks. The vigilantes terrified black residents and kept them confined to their home for three days, I'm sorry, for days. It took three months for you, Mayor Lovero, and the Berwyn Police Department, three months, to acknowledge and address community members' concerns about their actions that day, and your initial response in September of 2020 was to deny that vigilanteism even occurred. That is the prime example of repeating history. Mayor Lovero and city council take a step towards healing today, join the cities in California to Indiana to North Carolina, who have acknowledged their racist history, apologized for it, and committed to doing better. Pass the proclamation so we can truly start becoming a welcoming city.
Ms. Lovero, members of the aldermen. To continue to read, establish citywide programming for Black History Month. February is Black History Month in the US, and we'd like to emphasize that black history is US history, black history is Latin American history, black history is world history, black history is human history. The proclamation you, Mayor Lovero, read last month in honor of Black History Month stated, and I quote, "Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert Lovero, and the esteemed members of the city council hereby proclaim February 2022 Black History Month, Black Health and Wellness in the city of Berwyn, and call upon public officials, educators, residents, to observe this month with national and local ceremonies, activities, and programs," end quote. Yet, the city held no ceremonies, activities, or programs, nor has it done since it first stated recognizing Black History Month in 2020. We call on the city to put its own words into action, and to lead by example, to coordinate citywide programming to celebrate the history and the contributions black Americans, including Afro-Latinos, who make up about twenty-five percent of the black population in the United States. Third point that we state, support and partner with organizers for the 2022 Juneteenth event. Black residents led by Summer Butler made history in Berwyn on June nineteen, 2021, when they've held the first community-wide Juneteenth event celebrating black history and featuring black artists, creative vendors, children activities, and entertainment. This hugely successful event welcomed a diverse group from in and out of Berwyn, and this was a milestone in Berwyn's history towards racial progress. The foundation has been built, there is absolutely no reason why the city should not add its support to the event. The fourth point, recognize the thirtieth anniversary next month of the firebombing of the Campbell family in nineteen ninety-two. This is one of the most somber moments in Berwyn's history. Having the city recognize the event will help us remember the past in order to recognize how far we've come, and renew our commitment to becoming a stronger Berwyn. The Resoma Collective supports these initiatives and renews our commitment to addressing anti-blackness in the Latinx community through discussions and workshops, both internally and throughout the community. We call on Mayor Robert Lovero and the city council to stand with black residents of Berwyn today, and show a commitment to diversity and equity, apologies for that, to show a call of commitment to diversity and equity by supporting these black-led initiatives. Thank you.
My name is Jenna Muslim Palace, I'm in the third ward, and I'm here to fully support Berwyn's racial reconciliation proclamation and urge city council... and urge City Council and the mayor to do the same. And as a white person at this podium right now, all I want to use my time for is to say exactly what Ben and Summer said. That's what I support.
Hi, my name is Neil Waltmeyer. I live at the 1400 block of Home Avenue in the Eighth Ward. And I just want to make one point about this is that clearly, you know, black residents, black immigrants and their family run out of this town by violent racists. And neutrality doesn't work in this situation. It doesn't work now. It didn't work before there was white nationalism on the rise. But, you know, the stuff that was embedded in our laws and practices happen today, and we have unequal outcomes, and neutrality doesn't work. So we have to have anti-racist policies to fix this problem. And we also have to know that white supremacists are doing the dirty work of rich corporations and are anti-government, and that's probably why, you know, we have empty pools down the street from my house and things, and that we can do things together as a public to create equity with a special lens towards equity. And so, just saying, we can't be neutral in this situation, and we should support the proclamation and dig deep into what is embedded in our laws and practices and change those things. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome to the alderman. Anything for open forum? Okay, Clerk Paul, item C1, please.
Item C1 are the committee of the whole and the regular City Council meeting of February 8th, 2022.
Be my motion to accept the minutes of the City Council meeting Committee Hall of February 8th, 2022, as presented.
Second. Motion by Fates, seconded by Leja, to commit the, to accept the minutes in the City Council meeting in Committee of the Whole of February 8th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I didn't see this young lady get up. I'm sorry for cutting you off. Go ahead.
Is it okay that I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Hannah Marshall. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. For the first 10 years of my life, I lived on the 1500 block of Ridgeland, and for the last 15 years, I've lived on the 32nd 100 block of Wisconsin. I'm 25, and that means that I was born in 1996. And in 1992, just four years before I was born, the Campbell family was firebombed. I didn't know that until recently, and I don't think that my having known that would have been a detriment to my view of the city. Had I been told by the city in a state of humility and understanding and acknowledgement of past, rather than not learning it until recently from neighbors and concerned citizens, because my city has been hiding that out of shame. Because what we must acknowledge here, and, and, you know, as you can see, I didn't come up here with notes, I'm speaking from the heart, that the truth of the matter is that I have a lot of pride for my city. It's the only city that I've ever lived outside of college, outside of study abroad, and I would even consider raising my children here. But the truth of the matter is that I don't want to raise my children in a city where the schools that they attend may not be welcoming of students of other colors, especially black students. I've always been proud to grow up in a predominantly Latino community, right? Why is that different for our black neighbors? Why has 6% of our city been black and that has not, that has not grown at all, despite the growing gentrification and, and, you know, like, and I don't say that necessarily in a bad way, I just want to say gentrification is such a loaded term. We have been growing. We've been, we've become more safe, more inclusive as a city, and yet, our black population has not grown. And I think that may have something to do with the fact that we are not living out truth. We are not living out openness and welcoming in our neighborhoods. Because unfortunately, it really does start from the top. You know, we can, we can be here and we can say that we care about this, but if we're told we only have 15 minutes, what does that say about the amount that we actually care? That you actually care, that you and 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 you actually care?
Yes.
When we are only given 15 minutes, and I believe this is probably the most busy it's been in a long time. I'm just guessing, I don't know. You all right?
Yes.
So I just want to say, as a, as a resident, I've been here my entire life, was someone with a lot of pride of being from Berwyn, I tell people all the time, I wear my spindle shirt with pride, right? I really want my city to have pride that it has moved past its wrongs, and in order to do that, it must acknowledge its wrongs. Thank you.
Clerk Paul, item F1, please.
F1 is a communication from the mayor regarding appointment of deputy chief to the fire department.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's appointment of Lieutenant David Ollinger as deputy chief of the Berwyn Fire Department effective February 23, 2022, due to the announced retirement of Deputy Chief Jay Diebold.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Wywood, to concur with the appointment of Lieutenant David Ollinger as deputy chief due to the retirement of Deputy Chief Jay Diebold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G1, please.
Item G1 is a communication from the clerk regarding rescheduling or canceling City Council meeting on June 28th, 2022.
It'll be my motion to choose option two, to cancel the scheduled meeting for June 28th. That was agreed upon in Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion by Fates, seconded by Ruiz, to cancel the June 28th meeting due to the primary election, as agreed upon in the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I-1, please.
I-1 is a communication from Alderman Lennon regarding budget and finance committee meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the Budget and Finance Committee meeting minutes from February 10, 2022, submitted by First Ward Alderman Lennon as informational.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Carmichael, to consider the minutes from the Budget and Finance Committee of February 10 as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-1, please.
J-1 is a communication from Police Chief Simaglia regarding approval of North Berwyn Park District Easter Parade.
I move that we accept and concur with Police Chief Simaglia's granting permission and authorization for the North Berwyn Park District Easter Parade with the assistance of the Berwyn Police Department on Saturday, April 6, 2022, at 10:30 a.m.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Benny, please.
It is your town.
Rick.
It's a sundowntown because of this attitude. We all know the members of the city, everybody.
Please. Let's, let's stop, please. Rick, I'm asking everybody to stop, please.
Wait, wait, folks. It was a sundowntown. How dare that? How dare y'all?
Folks, we don't need this. Let's just keep our tools, let's finish the meeting, and we don't need this, please. Okay? All right. Did you make your motion?
I'll second that.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Fates, to concur with the authorization of Chief Police Simaglia for the Easter Parade for the North Berwyn Park District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-2, please.
J-2 is a communication from Fire Chief Hayes seeking authorization for personnel moves.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Hayes' request, requested authorization for personnel moves, new hires, and promotion, which has been planned for in the budget.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Wywood, to concur with the request of Chief Thomas Hayes and allow him go to the Police and Fire Commission for the vacancy for a firefighter paramedic position and to promote the next qualified candidate from the lieutenant's list. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-3, please.
J-3 is a communication from Chief Hayes requesting permission to purchase a new Pierce fire engine.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief Thomas Hayes' recommendation to purchase a new Pierce enforcer pumper engine with financing through PNC for a total cost of $701,952.86.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Wywood, to concur with the request of Fire Chief Hayes allowing him to purchase the H, new Pierce enforcer pumper with financing through PNC for a total cost of $701,952.86. All those in favor on the call of the roll?
Wywood.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fates.
Aye.
Fabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J-4, please.
J-4 is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller requesting the council to approve purchase of a 2022 F-550 Ford dump truck.
I make a motion that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation approving the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-550 dump truck with a municipal snow package for $93,103.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller to approve the purchase of a 2022 Ford 550 dump truck with municipal snow package for $93,103. All those in favor on the call of the roll?
Wywood.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fates.
Aye.
Fabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J-5, please.
J-5 is a communication from Director Schiller requesting authorization for lease purchase of a 2022 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper.
I'd like to make a motion that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation approving the purchase of a 2022 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper with standard care-maintenance agreement for a total cost of $388,596 to be paid over a five-year lease with annual payments of $81,865.49.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aronella, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the purchase of a 2022 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper to be leased for a total cost of $388,596 to be leased over a five-year period for an annual payment of $81,865.49. All those in favor on the call of the roll?
Wywood.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fates.
Aye.
Fabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item J-6, please.
J-6 is a communication from Finance Director Ben Dash regarding the scheduling of the public hearing for the 2022 budget.
I move that we accept the 2022 draft budget document from Finance Director Benjamin Dash as informational.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Carmichael, to accept the 2022 draft budget as informational, allow him to notice up the public hearing on March 8th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-7, please.
J-7 is a communication from Finance Director Ben Dash requesting to declare fire department vehicles as surplus property.
I move that we concur with Finance Director Ben Dash's declaration as surplus property of the fire department's 2008 Ford Explorer and 2014 Ford Escape, as requested by Fire Chief Hayes.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Carmichael, to concur with the Finance Director and declare the surplus property for the 2008 Ford Explorer and the 2014 Ford Escape, as per Chief Tom Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-8, please.
J-8 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca regarding settlement of 14 WC 030297.
It'll be my motion to concur with City Attorney Bertucca to sell case 14 WC 030297 in the amount of $7,500 that was granted in executive session.
Second.
Who's second?
Aye.
Okay. Motion by Fates, seconded by Leja, to concur with the recommendation of City Attorney Bertucca settle the above-captured case in the amount of $7,500 as the authority granted in executive session. All those in favor on the call of the roll?
Wywood.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fates.
Aye.
Fabon.
Aye.
Ruiz.
Aye.
Aronella.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. J-9, please.
J-9 is a communication from Building Department Director Lazaro regarding demolition of property at 2905 South Ridgeland Avenue.
Be my motion to concur with Director Lazaro for the demolition of 2905 Ridgeland.
Second.
Motion by Fates, seconded by Leja, to concur with the recommendation of Director Lazaro and allow the demolition at 2905 South Ridgeland Avenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J-10, please.
J-10 is a communication from Director Lazaro regarding demolition of 1526-1530 South Clinton.
I motion to concur with Building Director Lazaro to grant permission to demolish 1526 through 30 South Clinton.
Second.
Motion by Aronella, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the direction of Lazaro, Building Director Lazaro, and allow the demolition of 1526-30 Clinton Avenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Wywood, seconded by Carmichael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman and Committee meetings, Alderman, Wywood.
Call the chair.
Alderman, Leja.
Call the chair.
Alderman, Fates.
Call the chair.
Alderman, Fabon.
Call the chair.
Alderman, Ruiz.
Call the chair.
Alderman, Aronella.
I just want to, for Black History Month, recognize some members of our community, some that are not, but are doing great things in our community. So first of all, I want to mention Claudine Andrews. She is the first District 100 African-American board member. Fritz Paul-Amuel, he is the first African-American D-98 board member, which I had the pleasure on being on that board with him for 10 years. On our Police and Fire Commission, we have Commissioners Daniel Treadwell, Alice Solis, and my boss, our first District 98 African-American superintendent, Dr. Smith. Also, on our Police Auxiliary Board, we have Mr. Patrick Washington. And on our Library Board, I want to thank Antoine Evans. So for Black History Month, I just wanted to recognize those individuals. Call the chair.
Carmichael?
Call the chair, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Carmichael, seconded by Fabon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.[1762.51]